I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of November 16, 2021 to order. Please follow rule.
Chair Lombardi.
Present.
Mrs. Mayo.
Here.
Mrs. Vada.
Here.
Mr. Conno.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
We have five present, no absent. We have a forum. Let you lead.
Aye.
The United States of America. The Republic of America. My nation, my God, and his people. The Constitution of Justice for all.
So I will open it up. Public comment. Well, I'll combine them, public comment or community comments. I'm going to ask everyone to keep their comments brief and please be respectful. And I'm going to, I'm going to provide everyone two minutes who is on, who are on this list. Hold on, let me just get to my time. Mr. Savigny.
Hold on. Joey Savigny, 1790 Pountail Road. I come before you tonight with the resolution. Gloucester School Committee had passed the resolution a little while back regarding the fact that the RIASC calling us terrorists, I'm sorry, terrorists and domestic terrorists. What I'd like to do is pass the resolution out to you tonight and open it up for discussion.
Mr. Savigny, just procedurally, just procedurally, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So we, we would not be able to have a public comment on it, but you are free to speak about it.
Okay. Can I ask for it to be put on the agenda for the next meeting?
If somebody were to sponsor it, you can ask.
So basically, Tim Jeffrey from RIASC has been in contact with the FBI. He's been in contact with the U.S. Attorney General's Office. And pretty much anybody who comes before you with a disagreement is earmarked as a domestic terrorist. I don't feel that our taxpayer money should be going to RIASC to label us as domestic terrorists. So pretty much what I'm asking is for you guys to look at a resolution to withdraw funding from RIASC and send a message to them. The town in North Smithfield doesn't stand for this, neither do the parents in North Smithfield. I've been before you on two other occasions. We agree to disagree. So we solved a major math problem one year that we had in high school. Doesn't make me a domestic terrorist because I care about my kid's education and want to fight for it. But it also shouldn't prohibit a parent who is afraid to come up here and say something because they may be labeled as a domestic terrorist. I would ask for you guys to put that resolution on at your next meeting. I think it's something that needs to be discussed. I know it was brought up at a council meeting and there was no vote taken there.
10 seconds.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You want to hand those out? Is it Rob Stosme? Rob, if you could.
Rob Storm, North Smithfield Middle School, girl softball coach. Last minute, I showed up 30 minutes early for the school committee meeting, so. And then I was able to take the time and already saw that it's going to be on the discussion tonight under old business and update on the progress and research or whatnot as to looking for alternate throwing areas in the softball field. So I was just basically looking for that update and hopefully it'll be discussed and we can get some feedback as to what has been done or if anything has been looked at since the last meeting.
Sure. I can just, if you want me to try to save you time, although the superintendent may say something very briefly. We do not have any sketches or anything to present. But I can tell you that it will not be on the softball field, anything that's presented. Right? So. If that helps you, saves you time.
Yeah, no, I just, as far as like anything, I know you guys don't have anything to show out, to show tonight or whatnot, but as far as what the school committee's vision is going forward, you know, to what are you guys going to do or was the superintendent's office going to do the athletic department? What are their actions that are going to be taken going forward to look at that? I mean, are they going to have an engineering firm come back in and take a look at it? Or are they going to have different people go out and look at the school grounds and say, okay, this is a possible location for it? Or are there going to be ad hoc subcommittees to take a look at it or whatnot? So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ariana Ramos. Ms. Ramos, two minutes, please.
Ariana Ramos, 40 Green Street. I have one child in high school currently. October 5th, 2021, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees emailed, the executive director Timothy Duffy sent an email out to the school committees in Rhode Island in response to the National School Board Association stating, "RIASC will conduct our U.S. Attorney or contact our U.S. Attorney as well as the FBI to coordinate with them on what, if any, steps are needed to take. In the interim, please surprise me of any issues you have during the committee meetings on such topics as mask mandates, issues with equity education, rights of LGBTQ, and BIPOC students. Absent any threat of harm, many members of our community have expressed deep concern over what could only be construed as an inherent effort to silence intimidate parents from speaking publicly. One would expect in an effort to be transparent, this topic would be added to our agenda to allow us to hear our school committee's stance and discuss as a community. But to date, we have yet to see this topic added to our school committee agenda to have open discussion. So in an effort to show where this community and our school committee stands, I ask that each person in this room raise your hand if you rebuke the RIASC's decision to parents, to report parents to the FBI who speak out in committee meetings. It's been noted that nobody in the committee raised their hand. In recognition of this threatening behavior by the state and federal.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. We have not had the, we have not had the, I personally have not had the opportunity to vet what Ms. Ramos is saying. And I do not think that it's appropriate for her to try and take an informal poll of the committee in a way that it's going to be. What is, what is your goal here with that informal poll?
Let it be added as the kind of item for discussion.
I, I think that point's been made. I think that point, I think that point's been made, Mr. Chair.
Hey, all right, all right. You may continue. Just one second. All right.
Mr. Chair, another point of order. Are we going to allow one second?
Let, if you might, let her continue. If you want to say something, go to the podium and say it. You're more than welcome to, although I cut off the discussion. Go ahead. This is not a question and the answer.
So in recognition of this threatening behavior by the state and federal school committee associations, districts across the country and in our own state have taken the action in opposition with holding dues from the state school board and associations. Our town council, who also shared the belief should be addressed, recently issued a resolution stating a strong recommendation that the school district withhold membership from the RIASC. Rather than addressing the issue on the agenda, a very troubling response to the town council by Mr. Jones was said instead. This response can only be interpreted as an effort to silence and intimidate parents in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ferguson?
You're up.
Two minutes, please.
Yeah, I'm Danielle Ferguson. I'm actually going to take a few one minutes and two minutes. Um, I just want to address the fact that I was not able to defend myself the last time that 27 teachers signed a letter against me for some comments that I made that had absolutely nothing to do with any of them. I just want you to know that if anybody and everybody who had half a brain in the room knows exactly what I meant. Going to the paper and the radio stations was a cowardice move and it didn't do anything for me. It wasn't intimidating at all. I'm going to say whatever it is that I want to. I want you to know that I have First Amendment rights. And I also, it's, it's amazing to me that 27 teachers of the high school, the high school that my son goes to, sign that piece of paper, they teach my son. And on top of it, they are going to try to condemn my First Amendment rights, but they teach my son. This is the United States of America. I say whatever I want, and if you don't like it, you have the right to not listen. Now, we have an agenda here today because, like Ariana just said, the Merritt Garland put out a statement saying on October 20th that he would not use the FBI to target parents and call them domestic terrorists. He put that on testimony. A whistleblower today put out an official document showing that he actually is. And that we have a tag name, actually. The parent's tag name is Edu Officials. Now, on top of it, they are tagging us for anything that has to do with mask mandates, critical race theory, and anything that they don't like, which you probably already know this, I'm guessing, unless you're listening to CNN. So on top of it, I did a little bit of digging because while all of that stuff was going on with my last speech.
Ms. Ferguson, if you could wrap it up.
I'm going to wrap it up in a second, but I have the right to talk. And the reason why I'm going to use a little bit more time is because last time, when you guys did the whole 27 teacher note, you guys went against your own bylaws, didn't do it legally, and you may get an OMA violation for that. I'm just letting you know now. Okay? So I am going to talk because I was told that I couldn't. So now I am. Now, on top of it, I did a little digging of my own because I get a text message that says that Peg Boda needs to, that the letter needs to be read out loud, or Peg says that things are going to get worse for me. Who do you think you are?
This is.
So I did a little bit of digging. Peg works for RISE. Does anybody know that Peg works for RISE?
Not relevant.
She works for the RISE Department in Education. Yep. And you know what she does? Survey work. Which is critical race theory in our schools.
Let me, the, the meeting is back on. That ends public and community comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. You know what? I'm going to take a five minute process. Okay, we're back on the record on the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
No move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent, before we get to your item, if I may go to new business, item number two, discussion regarding North Smithfield's shelter locations and awareness. I have the council president here. He wants to talk about that issue. Mr. President?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just have, a couple of weeks ago, we had an Orisa come through and had it been snow, it would have been quite a storm. So it got me thinking that we really don't, we really don't have any shelters, although technically we do. We really don't advertise the fact that we have shelters available to the residents of the town. I'd like to work with the school committee and also the EMA to make, make it well-known to the people in this, in this community. It's not going to be a shelter for a long, you know, for, for anybody from outside the community. But just if power goes out in your home during a, during a storm, you're without hot water or electricity, then I'd like to establish something over here at the school, maybe the high school, the middle school, where they can take a warm shower, have a place to stay for a short period of time until the electricity goes back on. Currently, we, a shelter is designated at Kendall Dean, but there's no showers over there. And it's probably not as good a spot. And if it were the longer term situation, then there'd be a situation where we could possibly have food available if people were really in that kind of trouble. So I would like to work with the school committee, the EMA, and the town council to get this going before the winter. At least to establish either the middle school, the high school, it's up to you, sir.
If, if I could add?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes. It, it is an established shelter. We do have EMA trailer with a lot of supplies for the community. Plus, and the reason the high school was chosen was because of the, the generator capability. Right. So everything is there in place, but as you said.
Nobody knows.
It's, you're right. What is the plan if a massive storm comes through? How do we notify people you could come to the high school?
Right. So why don't we work on developing a plan?
Yeah, because all the pieces are in place to accommodate a, a large swath of the community. But you're right, there's, there's, we, we can be with our EMA director and just, just, just kind of role play this. And table top it and, and get the information out there.
If you need any help from us, we'd be glad to help you.
Oh, absolutely.
If we can establish, if we can get a meeting going sooner than later on this. Could be a storm coming through any, you know, within the next couple of, you know, next few weeks.
Very much. Yep.
So it'd be great that if people knew electricity's out, let's go, let's go to the high school.
Very good.
Okay, because right now it's there, but nobody knows about it.
Mr. McGee is here. He's a fantastic chef. He prepares a lot of meals for people. He has this amazing chili or, or bake, what's something that he does, so it's.
All right. So let's get this done and it'll be good for everybody.
Okay.
Mr. President, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. President, what do you, what, what, what can we do to help you? What do you need from us?
I just, well, actually, Mr. St. Jean pretty much covered it. What I needed was to establish the fact that it's going to be, I mean, it's there already.
It's there.
And people just don't know about it. So I can take care of that and, and I can make sure that people do know about it.
Every year that, Mr. McGee, the, the trailer, the, the, the storage container behind the school is, is restocked with emergency supplies. And, and the, yeah.
Well, last year, some power, some people were out of power for five days.
Okay.
And I bet you nobody came, showed up at the high school, right?
No. Probably because we had power, we, we were running classes.
Okay.
But.
Right.
But, but yeah.
See, that's something else we got to work on.
But there's also, that's the other piece that we can sort of game out. So it's at what point do we reopen the schools versus continue it as a, a shelter?
Right. All that has to be worked out. Very good. Okay.
I mean, maybe we could do something with the wing, you know, isolate a wing or something like that if it was an emergency. I don't know.
Well, we, we can work that out.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. If you want.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I can reach out to the head of the EMA and set something up. If you want to give me a call and get to work on that.
That's fine. In fact, last time I spoke to him, he brought a, a, a huge batch of mouse pads. Okay? So we, we like this stuff. So if we can, we can get some mouse pads and then work out a plan for the, the community.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Storm is here. I just wanted, did you speak to Mr. Storm or do you want to put that, this on the record? You want to jump to?
Sure.
So there's a discussion vote or other action, new business. I'm sorry, that's old business. Item number three, turf field and track update with possible new track and field throwing area. If we can move to that unless there's an objection. Superintendent, as you told me today, the, the plans and everything on in, but you want to at least update us on where you've been going with this in the athletic department?
I'll, I'll just do a recap on the entire athletic complex, including the new throwing area that we're looking at. So the, that's our new track, by the way, with a very professional new starting blocks. And then I took this picture this afternoon at around noon time. That's the, the state of the, the turf field. So it will be ready and open for the Thanksgiving game. In fact, tonight, Mr., actually, Mr. Tech was sending pictures. They, he was out there with the football team, firing up the light, showing them the field and testing everything out. So it will be ready for the Thanksgiving game. Now, we're going to have to shut it down afterwards because it's not quite done. It still has to go through inspections and, and other things. We're also looking at other ways, in fact, let me. We've been looking at some management companies as well, our consultants, and just to get an idea of how we can better manage that field, not only to make it accessible and bring more teams in, but also use it to generate more revenue. The goal would be that the rentals from the field and the increased gains that we can have will be able to, within a 10-year period, pay for replacement and updates, even though the field is specked out for 15 years. Now, we also, as part of the new field and the new track, have a maintenance contract with new equipment coming in. So we will be able to truly groom and maintain the field to extend the life as long as possible. But along with the management and the rentals, we also have to consider how we're going to schedule it, how we're going to allow public access to it. Now, one of the things I don't want to do, and, and a number of communities have done this with their, their synthetic turf fields and their professional tracks, is not allow any public use. It's only for rentals and student use. And I, I've had the conversation with Mr. Lombardi, and I don't think anybody wants to deny the public the use of these fields. But it has to be done in a, a controlled way. So for example, this isn't an asphalt track that you could just go on it with, with, with skateboards or roller blades or, or, or anything like that. It has to be specifically soft sole shoes. You can't have gum on the track. I mean, we've had to pull out gum from the, the previous track. We just don't want, we can't have gum being stuck into the new track. Likewise, it's, becomes an issue over the weekend, which we have teams from other communities just kind of show up on our football field and use it for practice. They haven't booked it. They haven't rented it. They're just using it. And so these are some of the things that we need to be able to control. We need to be able to watch it and maintain it. I know we get, I, I, I hear frustration from our custodians when they go out Mondays and they see that there's all the water bottles and trash around the basketball court, even though the trash bins are there. And even after some of our games with rentals, there's trash under the bleachers and it's, we need to be able to monitor and maintain it. So that, that way, there needs to be some sort of rules of engagement and some oversight of it. So yes, we do want to open it up so that it can be a community resource, but we also want to be able to preserve it so that it will be with us for a very long time. So that's what we're looking at with the overall athletic field. Now, as far as the expanding track and field with the throwing area, the, the turf field and the track came in under budget. Mr. CP tightly managed it, put some changes in there and saved us some money. The intent then was to take some of that savings and apply it towards the new throwing area. Now, the way to do it, and I hate to say on the cheap, was to sort of co-op and share space with the softball field, which causes an issue with scheduling, with preservation of the field, with growing the softball program, while at the same time, we're growing the discus and shot put and, you know, the, the other parts of track and field. So I was hoping to have a plan to show everybody tonight, along with the ballpark price, which will give us the throwing area, but it will also preserve the softball field. And there will be an increased cost to this one because part of it would be a necessitate, at least on the initial discussions, a 60-foot fence. This is the area between the two schools, 60-foot fence along the middle school parking lot side. Because of errant hammers and discuses, we don't want them to be shattering car windows. So it would require an additional very high, very long fence. But again, it's doable. We're getting the design for it. And then we're going to be getting some pricing to see what it would cost. And at that point, we can come back to the school committee and we could take a look at the finances of it, the money we saved on the turf field. What monies can we generate with the new facilities? I mean, can it ultimately offset the cost of track and field? The throwing area, because now we can start hosting meets. And as we host meets, we can also bring in some rentals and revenues. There's also the possible revenues generated from the new concessions there. So again, we're looking at the whole thing. We would like to make the limited space we have, maximize it, and make it a a really good facility that the town can be proud of and that can also ultimately sustain itself.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Anybody have any questions for us?
Thank you.
I have just one quick question.
Yeah.
Can you, I mean, Superintendent, it's probably too soon to say, but we're talking about a fence. Any ideas? Is it more like a chain link fence? More like a net fence?
Actually, I, I don't know. And that will be part of the, the design and the pricing and the recommendation from the, from the engineering firms that specialize in this type of work.
So if you go to Conley Field in Providence, they have it right next to the parking lot. They actually pull it, I believe they pull it out. See, they pull out the fence going straight now. They have two sides there. It's actually a movable fence.
Thank you.
And I'm just assuming that's what it would be.
So hopefully at the December meeting, we'll have, prior to that, we'll have some information to share. Does that work?
Thank you.
Good.
All right. Any further questions? Moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent?
Yeah. So what I'm going to present to you are some of our October enrollment numbers, along with some trends and patterns that we're seeing. First of all, I'm just going to jump over to NESTEC here. Now, NESTEC does a annual projection
Now, NASDAQ does a annual, uh, projection based on the live births, the, uh, uh, home sales, a number of factors. And, and I know this is one of the things that people, uh, jump, try to jump to immediately. And that it's, uh, projecting out 10 years, what the North Smithfield School Enrollment will look like. And based on the NASDAQ projections, we're pretty much going to remain level where we are right now. Right now, obviously, a lot of factors can take place. One of the things it doesn't, uh, factor in is, uh, universal pre-K. Honestly, I don't know what that's going to look like right now. And if it means that, uh, um, at preschool, instead of having a lot of, you know, we, we have students in, in North Smithfield preschool, uh, but there is also a lot of daycare and preschools around us. Now, universal pre-K, again, I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't know if that's going to continue to subsidize the daycares that are around us or the funding will be to grow preschool in North Smithfield, which would add to the enrollment, which would obviously put some, uh, uh, population stresses on NSCS as far as finding additional space. But that's down the road. But for now, based on potential home sales, some of the developments we have going on in town and the birth rate and the people moving in and out. We're pretty much at the point where they're looking for us to stabilize as far as our student enrollment. Now, a couple of other pieces of information here. Let me get rid of this screen. So we're right now at about, uh, 1,614 students as of October. And, and, and I will be uploading to the website and sharing, uh, uh, the historical data with you. It really does mirror a lot of what's in NASDAQ, but I pulled out a few, few new areas. So you can see, you know, back in 2008, we had 1849 students. We're at 1614. We've been pretty much holding in that area and NASDAQ expects us to, uh, continue. For special ed, one of the things that we've been able to do is out-of-district placements. These are students with, um, really severe needs that cannot be handled within the district. So institutionalized, uh, uh, you know, uh, highly, highly specialized services. So clinical services, psychological, uh, educational. We did, and, and, and one of the reasons why this is an important number for us from the budgeting standpoint, these outplacements range from between $70,000 to $100,000 per pupil. And that doesn't include the transportation to move them back and forth to it, to the facility. So, uh, back in 1718, we had 27 students that we could not service within the district. And the thing is, and, and it's not just for, from a budgetary standpoint, we want the kids to stay in North Smithfield. We don't want them on a bus going out to Providence or Smithfield or Lincoln or, or wherever the, uh, you know, their outplacement is. Uh, want to keep them here in the community. So we, we went from 27 to 24, uh, 1920, we had 18. Last year, 17 students, this year, 16 students. So we're continuously looking to bring more and more kids back to keep them here in North Smithfield, in their community schools, and also save on that tuition and that transportation. Now, we also have this group transition, uh, students. Now, these are students who have, uh, special education again, who have turned 18. But the law is, is that we continue to educate them until their 22nd birthday. So right now, we have seven students in our transition program. Ranging age 18, 19 to almost 22, and which, at which point they'll age out. We offer programs for them. They do work, job placements, a lot of life skill, uh, work. And it's a, a, a nice vibrant little, uh, community of kids, uh, getting ready to, 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 to move on. Uh, and then we also offer services only. These are, uh, younger students. These are, are PK. These are younger. Uh, these are students who, um, who don't attend our schools but live in the community, and we do provide special education services for them as well. Now, our CTE program, we currently, right now, have 11 students who are paying tuition to us to attend CTE programs at North Smithfield High School. All right, and we need this, uh, to sort of offset. And I'm going to show you the numbers of the students who were paying tuition to go to other communities. But we had, we've had 15 students so far, two graduated, two withdrew. They decided to go back to their home communities. Uh, we have 11 currently. And in fact, just in the, uh, last two days, we've had two more inquiries, uh, for, to come to our CTE program. And the CTE programs are in, uh, music, engineering, and business and finance. We're hoping, no promise, but we're hoping that we have the, a, a possibility of doing a materials and construction and vocational CTE next year. Our new, uh, our new teacher that we hired is fully certified, uh, to offer a CTE program in construction, plumbing, electrical. Um, so we're hoping to offer that to North Smithfield students as well. And for at-home instruction, now typically, we have gone between 24 and 27 North Smithfield residents, uh, students who have, the families have opted to, uh, for at-home. Last year during COVID, that number went up to 51, which is understandable. It did this across the state, every single district, the home, the home teaching, uh, you know, spiked. So we had more students return. So this year we have 41. And again, they range from people who have never attended our school. We have people who have moved into the community. We're home, homeschool students in their, their previous, uh, towns. And they continued homeschooling here. We've had some folks that, you know, who were homeschooling because of COVID. And they decided to continue on. They, they liked it. So, you know, so the number has dropped, but again, this isn't just North Smithfield across the state. Homeschooling numbers have, uh, you know, continued to be up there. Now, for the out-of-district, okay, this is the charter schools, the CTE programs and vocational. All right, and I have a multi-gear breakdown by different location. And again, I'll, I'll share this all out with you. We had a spike this year. We have 80 students right now. Last year, last, we had, um, two years ago, 73, 72. This year, we jumped up to 80 students. All right, now, why did this increase? And if we take a look at, actually, I'll do, I'll do this one. Some of these placements are new this year. So if you look in the FY22 area, that's this year. All right, we've always had students at Beacon. All right, we, we went from 23 to 16 to 12 and we're at 13. Barrowville is new, all right, this year. Now, Barrowville has CTE programs. And what I've seen this year, uh, for the first time, is we have students who have moved into North Smithfield. But would still like to go to their old high school because that's where their friends are. And through school choice, through the CTE programs, uh, they can continue to go to their old high school and be with their friends. And, and I have to say, Ed, as much as we put a lot of academic rigor around the CTE programs, the Career Technical Education Program, so we advanced and we have, uh, you know, a lot of good things with it. It really is a social choice for most, most students. It's not the academic choice, which is frustrating from our end because all of these students who decide to go to another high school in another community, we pay their tuition to go. So, you know, every year, we have about $800,000 of our budget goes to support students who choose to go to school in other districts. And often that choice is around social. So also up this year, and this was something that a couple of years ago wasn't even an option, is that North Smithfield students wanted to do a vocational program, had to go to Windsocket Career Tech. But that has opened up, so now Davies is in play and we've seen more students, uh, move on to Davies. Windsocket Career Tech, uh, for North Smithfield is actually down, Davies is going up. We have a student who, uh, again, this is, this is CTE competition. We have a, we have a business, uh, business and finance, uh, CTE. Lincoln has an international business and finance, CTE. The student wanted the international, so we will pay Lincoln tuition for that student to attend that school. Pontigan City, uh, we jumped up to four students. Rise Mayoral Prep, every year adds a new grade level. We have a lot of back and forth going, uh, on with Rise. We have parents who try Rise out, don't like it, come back to NSCS. So we do have a lot of movement between Rise and coming back, but Rise keeps adding another grade level, which retains the, those students. Situate, another, another situation in which your family moves in, they lived in Situate, they moved to North Smithfield. The friends are in Situate and Situate has, uh, they were interested in their biomedical technology, CTE. We have an amazing science program. We have, you know, state-of-the-art labs. We have amazing teachers. We don't have a CTE. So, you know, they could, and, and again, wh- wh- what I'll tell you is that when the, when, when these parents make these choices, you know, I do call and talk to them and, you know, tell them what, what the school has to offer. And I try to convince them to stay and give them the options or, you know, or, or point, uh, uh, point out to, uh, Mr. McGee or Mr. Pepin or anyone just to say, look, you know, here's what we have right here. Consider staying, but we don't have the ability to say no. All right, so somebody wants to go, they go. So these are some of the things we're looking at. And I'll, I'll, I'll just hold it there and I'll, I'll, I'll share, I'll, I'll quote more of this data to the website. But the population is, is stabilizing. Uh, we're working on that sort of, again, retain as many students as possible here in North Smithfield. Because the alternative is that they go to one of these other, uh, communities, for whatever reason. It's, it's a cost to us. You know, I would much rather have that $800,000 re-invested back in our schools as opposed to offsetting, uh, budgets for other communities. One of the bright spots, though, is that because this is so difficult for all of these school districts, is that we're part of a Northwestern consortium. So we work in partnership with Lincoln, Cumberland, uh, Smithfield and Barrowville, North Smithfield. There's five of us. And we have an agreement unlike anything else in the state. When a student moves to, goes to one of these other CTE programs, the tuition is typically around $15,000 per pupil. All right, our five communities charge each other a flat $5,000. All right, so what it does, it does open up that little, little extra school choice, but it doesn't break our budgets. The rest of the state has not set themselves up this way. This was a sort of a, a, a multi-district, uh, agreement. And we do that with a lot of purchasing and a lot of other things to basically pull our efforts, pull our talents, try to save the money and, uh, improve our programs to the, the, the best that we can.
Financially, how does Rise affect us?
Well, okay, that's, uh, It, our, our pure pupil rate from the state goes to them. So the state gives us, what's our pure pupil? I think, uh, 6,000 or something like that. So from the charter standpoint, they'll get that.
And that's something that just isn't going to go away, unfortunately.
No. But you know what it is? It's, it's also, let me, uh, end the share. But you know what? The competition isn't bad either, you know, because it, it it has you looking at what they're doing, what they're doing well, what we're doing, what we're doing bad. And continuously try to improve. So if there are strategic programs, and again, one of the things that may, that we're at a little bit of a disadvantage, we're a small district. We can only offer so much. I mean, like, for example, for athletics, uh, we offer all but four of the inter-scholastic competitive, uh, teams, which is amazing for a district in size, right? But when you're looking at CTEs, um, and what, Claire, uh, Claire Arnold and I were just talking about this, this morning. We're concerned about Lincoln High School. They invested nearly, I don't know, what was their, what's their new high school? A $90 million state-of-the-art high school with, uh, you know, it, it, it's gorgeous. And they designed it for a lot of the vocational and the CTE program. So we're in comp, you know, we're in competition. Now, Lincoln's part of our consortium. And, uh, and you know what? We have Lincoln students at North Smithfield. So, you know, it may be a wash, uh, but it's also, uh, doing amazing work at North Smithfield High School and trying to, you know, continue with, with, with what we have with the older building, doing marvelous work, trying to modernize it and, uh, you know, make it, make it competitive. Academically, one of the, one of our strengths is that, uh, we're one of the highest-rated high schools in the state. All right, uh, we have, um, we have clubs, we have activities, we have every kind of athletic that you can imagine. And even where we can't float a full team, we do partnerships with other districts, uh, softball with Barrowville. We just signed a, uh, today hockey with, um, Windsocket. So, uh, oh, and football with Mount St. Charles. So again, we're just doing everything we can to offer as much as we can for our students. And that also goes into the marketing and getting the message out there that, look, you know, we have these amazing things. Our, the PR firm that we were using, and we, we created videos and we have consumables and we do advertising. They, they went defunct. Uh, they, actually, they were bought out, so we'll be looking at, you know, continuing. But we've also had some really good stuff coming out of the wicked cool news. Where the students at the high school, as part of a new media center we're building for them. We're looking at our students to also create marketing materials that will go out to the other communities to compete, you know, with CTEs, with tuitions, with, uh, with the dollars. So again, trying to engage the students as much as possible, engage the community and offer as much as we can.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions?
Just a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, just really to follow up on the superintendent's remarks. I'll explain an opinion on this. I just think the thing is, the best thing for us, I think we offer, North Smithfield offers a very lot, a wide range of, again, activities and sports for the size of the school. We, we can't be all things for all people. By that, I mean, let's take Beacon, for example. If, if this kid who's in North Smithfield really has the heart set and being a Broadway actor. Beacon has a theater, a full-fledged theater program. We just don't have that. And, you know, we can't do everything, is what I'm saying. We have a, a lot of great programs, we have a lot of great sports. But you might have that one kid who really wants to try to go on Broadway. They're going to want to try and be as many players as they can. So I think it's important that when we hear these things, we try to, I think it's important to do what we do well, as opposed to try and be everything to everybody. Because, uh, I, I, when I mean everything to everybody, I don't think that model. I don't think that model will work. I think for a small school like us, we've got to do what we do well, which is what we, we do. And we offer an awful lot. So, I'm just saying, if people are thinking, why don't we offer this program, why don't we offer that program? There is a limit financially to what we can, fiscally to what we can, to what we can offer.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Superintendent. Let me move on to, move on to the informational portion. So, it's personnel resignations, retirements, leave, absence and appointments and special extracurricular appointments. They're on for informational purposes only. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Thank you, Superintendent, for those. And going on to old business, the current operating and capital budget, twenty-two. Lisa, do you have anything to add on that?
Nope, reports are in your packet.
Thank you. Moving on to the fiscal year twenty-three, operating capital budgets. Superintendent, I assume you want to talk about guidelines because we're not there yet.
Well, that's actually Lisa Marcock. Okay, if she would pull the microphone up close to her, I will, I will spare her swinging the camera around to her face. So.
So, we rolled out the guideline and budget timeline to the administrators on November first. We are, they do back to us for first run review December seventh, I believe. And then in January, we'll come to you. I'm not sure if you want to change up your budget subcommittee or not, but we'll come to you later and ask you for meeting day.
Okay. Any further? Any questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to discussion vote or other action, twenty-twenty-two school committee meeting dates. They're in the packet. I assume they're similar to this year. Just moving it forward. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay. Yeah, she said that one of the weeks was moved to the April twelfth, the third week to the second week. I assume, let's do it. Yeah. Anybody have any questions or want to change anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two school committee meeting dates as presented.
So moved.
Motion been made. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's forty-two, forty-six, five A in regard to job performance of a NSA SSP personnel matter and job performance in regards to the superintendent's contract, and that's if needed. Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to exit executive session. Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to seal record. Motion been made. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. For the record, we have not had any votes in executive session. So, we discussed an action related to the NSA SSP personnel matter, which is termination. Based on the conversation in executive session, I'll entertain a motion to terminate that person.
So moved.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's contract. Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion been made. Is there a second? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned.